The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 19th, 2015 Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos. Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge and invocation. Alderman Newsom is going to make the invocation.
Father God, we just thank you for waking us up this morning to see this day that we've never seen before. I ask that you would bless each and every household in this community, that you would bless and keep them, that you would bless and keep all those that serve and protect our community. I just ask that you would give us wisdom and understanding to conduct the business of this city. And I pray that you will honor all these prayers. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I want your pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. They had a busy two weeks. Week before last, I went to Indianapolis and spoke with several mayors to try to find funding sources for our land acquisition and projects for the City of Waukegan. I got some very good ideas and some thoughts that we can utilize to proceed with land purchases and some innovative acquisition of lakefront property. Last week, I went to Cincinnati, Ohio. I was invited to the Mayor's Institute on Design at the University of Cincinnati. I sat for three days with PhDs in planning and urban design and seven other mayors. I presented Waukegan's master plan to them. I had an hour to present it to them. After that, we had a discussion about our plans, and we discussed our master plan in particular. And one thing, two things that really came to, came to the, to the head during the conversation was, number one, they said something we've been thinking about for a year now, and that was to eliminate the Amstutz Expressway. Their position was, it was wasting our space, it was moving traffic out of our downtown, and it needed to be gone. Obviously, you know, we have, we have a group now that's doing planning, and that's one of the topics that they touched on. So that was one of the issues they had. The second issue they had, they said to me after the presentation, "To buy as much lakefront property as we possibly could, as fast as we could." Because we have a gem, and we all know we have a gem. So needless to say, we're attempting to do that as well. Very rewarding, two weeks away from the city. And also, just so you'll know, when I went to Cincinnati, I was paid for by the University of Cincinnati. The City of Waukegan paid for not nothing, not my airfare, not my hotel, not my meals. So that was a caveat. Tonight, we have a group with us that, it's called the Waukegan Hispanic Basketball Team. They went to a tournament in Atlanta, Georgia, last week. A team consists, there were 47 teams in the tournament. The players on this team are ages 18 to 25, and lo and behold, a team from Waukegan won the tournament. They're here today. Mr. Antunes, would you please come forward, introduce your team? You bring them up, bring them all up, and tell us a little bit about the tournament.
Well, what can I say? We're proud to represent Waukegan out there, you know, because we've had this league for 20, 27 years, and it was kind of tough, you know, because sometimes, you know, the money we put for all these, all these costs, hotels and all that, but we did what we could, you know. But anyway, these guys are competing against 47 teams, and they're representing Waukegan, and we win them all, you know. And we have, we have another guy, his name is Raul, he owns the radio station, and he was, he was helping us, and it wasn't because of him who would have never gotten that. But anyway, and thank you for having us over here. Thank you, mayor. And thank you so much. You guys done a great job to the city, and all our players, they decide to give you this trophy.
Oh, my goodness. Great. You're getting that too?
Ralph, come on. Come on, Ralph. You were like, you could put that in, I didn't see you. Why was I here? We would have never gotten that. You got it? We were all down in our brains, they decided, you know, I know, it's a trophy, but...
I'd like to come in my office and see it, because I put everything in my office. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sir.
Now I'm speaking basketball. I thought you were talking about baseball. I do basketball.
All right, team man. Next on the agenda is the audience time. Arthur Cobb, Waukegan Main Street. Arthur, please.
Good evening, Mayor Motley and Alderman. As many of you know, Waukegan Main Street has a goal to bring more people and businesses to downtown Waukegan. It's a win-win when customer satisfaction and business profitability are achieved. To move us toward achieving this goal, here are examples of three actions being taken. Number one, we're seeking success stories and communicating them to the community. Number two, we are welcoming and promoting new businesses to our downtown. In fact, let me do a little promotion on them now. Horizon Benefit Services helps businesses and individuals navigate the quagmire of health insurance options, and their staff is bilingual. Liberty Tax has opened an office to meet the tax preparation needs of Spanish-speaking residents. And finally, Walkin Whiskey offers gourmet burgers and an extensive beverage selection. And number three, we are developing additional ways, such as luncheon and happy hour specials, to bring more people to our business district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clyde McLemore.
Good evening, mayor and Alderman, and all the women. Mr. Mayor, you have, once, I'm here once again to address this informal committee on race relations. Mr. Mayor, you have been in office for years, and at this point, I ask you, why now? Is it because you're up for reelection in 2016, and you want to trick the black community into thinking that you care? You mentioned that you don't want what happened in Waukegan, what happened in Zion in North Chicago, yet it's happening all over America, and no one, anyone, wants it to happen again. Two problems between black community and the police has been simmering for 50 to 60 years, now passing down from generations. So why not appoint a positive youth role model with whom youth can identify with? Mr. Motley, again, I am not here with the intentions to make anyone feel comfortable during an uncomfortable situation. I am not here to opposing these black men and women that you have chosen, nor am I here on anyone else's behalf. But mayor, since you've been in office, have you ever extended yourself personally to the black community? I myself have tried to sit down with you, and it seemed like I could get a message through faster to the President of the United States. Last week, Chicago, there was 74 drug overdose. Down there, they're mixing heroin with, mix of poison with the heroin. A train comes to Waukegan from Chicago on every hour. So don't you think those drug deaths are coming here as well? Are there any recovering addicts that understand the disease of addiction on your committee? Or is not a concern until it hits the white community? Economic empowerment is sorely needed in the black community. Are you, are any of your committee members skilled in this and planning to address this need? Black life is the value. Brown life is the value. Poor white life is the value. Some leaders are willing to give their lives in a struggle for the flock that they feed and clothe them. Some leaders will sell out their flock for a little bit of money to get a fancy suit, shoes, or upgrade on their automobile. All corruption is an enemy of the flock. Any sight...
McLemore has three minutes. Thank you, sir. It's three minutes. Thank you. Ralph Peterson.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, mayor, I'm here to speak on this panel you put together of these so-called five black outspoken outstanding leaders, which you're probably the only person that view them that way, because no one in the neighborhood does. But I'm here to speak about how you lied in the press and you built them up. And I'm here to ask you this. Have you spoke with them, asked them, have they ever spoke with Alice Howell? And all these people I'm going to name have dead children. As a matter of fact, all the names, they have someone dead in their family due to police brutality or misconduct. Mrs. Alice Howell, Mrs. Lewis, Mrs. Gwen, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. French, Mrs. Carr, the Austin family, or better yet, let's swing into Juan Rivera, Benny, Benny Starks, Mr. Dominguez, Mr. Gallas Gonzalez, the family of the poor victim of Ron White, who was molesting little boys. Now, I kind of swung that way. I'm going to say, these, these, these people you picked have had nothing to do with the community, and I'm confused how you really built them up in the press. We don't recognize them as leaders. They are pastors, sir, pastors. They have a church, that's it. Okay, now, I swung into these other people as to say, because I'm going to swing into Michael Waller. Mayor, all these people I just named are also victims of the disgraced, fallen state's attorney, Michael Waller. And here's what really, really bothers me. Mayor, I feel what you did is equivalent to appointing Adolf Hitler to a board in Highland Park. You slapped the Hispanic and the black community in the face by allowing Michael Waller, and excuse me, last week I said he was on a different board, but I come to find out it's on the 911 board. And this is, it's within your power to get rid of this guy. This guy has cost the city over $50 million. And by you allowing him to remain chairman on this board, you're really showing us the community where your loyalty lies. And just to mention, Melissa Kalyazinski, for instance, you know what I mean? That's getting ready to blow up in the city's face and cost X amount of million dollars. How can you allow this guy to remain on the board? Just the other night, I was watching a movie with Red Skullt and called The Flim Flam Man, and this is not out of being funny. I'm asking you, mayor, because this guy was slippery and he done a lot of backdoor deals. I'm asking you, mayor, are you a flim flam mayor? And this, I truly ask you for real. And I also know why you picked that puppet panel, that you call it, of these outstanding black outspoken leaders. I'm aware of the tasing of several times of a Mr. Louis Miles.
That's three minutes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Blanks.
Yeah. One thing, correction also I want to make mention as far as with Mr. Arthur Brumfield the last time, and how the city tore down and destroyed his home. One of the other aldermen that was not acting in any official capacity at that time was also Alda Lady Lisa May. She was not working in any confidential capacity as an alderman or in any way with the city. It was also brought to our attention that one of the reasons that we was coming here and coming before the council was because we was encouraged by some other elected official. And I have you to know that I've been coming here since 2004, well over a decade, so I think you all know I don't need any encouragement to be here, and I don't think these men here need any either, other than the best interest of our community and the youth of our community. So let's get that out of the way. One other room I want to clear up is that since we addressing this issue of race relation, what has come to the light is that someone had said that the city had extended Black Abolition Movement for the Mind $60,000 for the renovation of the BAM headquarters. And that is totally untrue, and we've never received a single dime or dollar from the city for anything, because we have been self-sufficient and independent in our approaches towards the issues of the community, as well as working with our youth for enlightenment and upliftment. Race relations, the subject at hand, race relations and atonement. See, I truly believe that if one is looking at building better race relations, it begins with atonement of the issues at home, not pointing to North Chicago, as I said before, not pointing to Zion in various places. As you heard some of my colleagues here mention earlier, when we talking about atonement, what do atonement means? It means to make amends for things that have been done wrong. And to point to other cities would allude to, there's nothing that this city have done wrong. We have to look no further if you want to make some atonement. Let's look at, as I mentioned before, Jeffrey Lewis, who was shot and killed in front of his own mother in his front yard for some alleged, as it alleged that he tried to hit an officer with a hammer. That was totally false. Let's look right here at the late Paris Bankhead, where he was beat by one of the police officers in the back of the head. The late Paris Bankhead. He's gone on since then. In fact, he was one of the members of our organization. Let's look at Jonathan Garcia, who I had to get to help sue the city based on, which is now suing the city, for his fractured nose.
Mr. Blanks.
Let's look, yes, sir.
Mr. Blanks, I'd like for you to pay attention to me, please, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, according to 2-65.1 of the Waukegan ordinances, you're not allowed to make personal attacks, you're not allowed to make rude remarks, you're not allowed to defame people. When you're making accusations based upon unfacted or unfounded statements, you're attempting to defame the administration, you're attempting to defame this council, and you're attempting to defame the City of Waukegan residents. Therefore, would you please limit your remarks to what is fact and not what is fiction? Thank you. You have the five seconds, Mr. Blanks.
No, I don't, no, it's not five seconds, because he took some of my time.
You have five seconds.
So as I was saying, right now, what I'm looking at at this particular point in time, that this won't be tolerated, and you won't be defaming the city and the, and the youth of the city by putting this false symbolism with symbolism with no substance.
You're limited to three minutes. You have three minutes, Ralph. Please have a seat.
What I call blackface.
Please have a seat, Mr. Blanks.
Racism and blackface is what we get in this city, time and time again.
Have a seat.
Racism and blackface, political symbolism with no substance, and you got to do better about the community of this people.
You need, you need to be sensitive of the rules of this council, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Blanks, it's always a pleasure to listen to you.
It's always a pleasure to be here. I will be here another 10 years if this is really the most hot.
Okay.
Until y'all get this white...
Minutes. Motion to approve the regular minutes of October 5th, 2015. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, all's in favor. Resolutions, proclamations, presentation, appointments. Presentation by Richard Lee, Waukegan Public Library, about the Ray Bradbury Storytelling. Mr. Lee?
Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to talk about our 10th Annual Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festival. The agenda may say that I'm going to make the presentation, but I'm actually going to turn it over to our new marketing manager, Amanda Civitello. Amanda?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our, as Richard said, our 10th Annual Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festival. It's hard to believe it's been 10 years. The Storytelling Festival this year is a celebration of Ray Bradbury, bringing us back to someone who the city has been proud of, someone who the city is looking to honor. And we're excited to do that this year by focusing just on Ray Bradbury's works in our evening and school matinee performances. So this year, at our performance on Friday, October 30th, at 7:30 PM at the Genesee Theater, you'll hear works from Dandelion Wine, as well as some short stories like The Foghorn, which I know is always popular. We look forward to welcoming, welcoming back Megan Wells as our artistic director, Obol William King, Jim May, Carol Birch, and Bill Oberst Jr. So we do hope you'll all be able to make it. We are so looking forward to having a great show this year. Our second big piece of news is that the library was recently awarded an $8,000 grant to launch a big read in the City of Waukegan. Basically, what a big read is, is a community-wide reading event. So from our storytelling festival, which is our kickoff event through February, we'll be trying to energize the community around reading Ray Bradbury's Fahrenheit 451. So we'll start off our big read with a keynote weekend featuring Professor Jonathan Eller of Indiana University, where he is the director of the Center for Ray Bradbury Studies. He'll be here to give a workshop, and we'll also welcome back actor Bill Oberst Jr., who is very generously donating a performance of Bradbury's Pillar of Fire to the library. So we hope you'll be able to make the workshop at 1:30, the performance at 3:30, and then join us in our big read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The envisioned scholars will not be able to make it tonight. They're, we're going to reschedule that. Community reports, public works committee, Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met this evening. Two items. Our first item, Item A, Public Works Committee recommends an ISO move that we authorize the proper city officials to reduce the letter of credit for the completion of the off-site improvements for the River Glen Capital Group LLC in the amount of $963,329, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
That's all, Your Honor.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Authorize proper city officials to purchase a pollution liability insurance policy, including TRIAs, recommended by the Horton Group, policy term of 32 months, in amount not to exceed $42,258, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Authorize proper, uh, proper city officials to purchase an underground storage tank liability insurance policy, as recommended by the Horton Group, policy term of one year, in amount not to exceed $9,789, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
That's all, Your Honor.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Authorize proper city officials to purchase a pollution liability insurance policy, including TRIAs, recommended by the Horton Group, policy term of 32 months, in amount not to exceed $42,258, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Authorize proper, authorized proper city officials to purchase an underground storage tank liability insurance policy, as recommended by the Horton Group, policy term of one year, in amount not to exceed $9,789, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Authorize proper city officials to award a contract for employee benefit brokerage and consulting services pursuant to a request for information issued by the Human Resource Director. Correction, that should be, that was amended one day, I'm sorry. Authorize proper city official to award the contract to the Horton Group for an amount not to exceed, I want to say, $70,200, an ISO move. I apologize, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Finance Committee, Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, sir. Only one item. Item B is being held over. Item A is authorize the proper city officials to enter into agreement with CDWG for the purpose of VMWARE for an amount not to exceed $39,340, and funding is from budget codes, bear with me. For those of you in the audience, and for those that are not on the finance committee, the... For those of you in the audience, and for those that are not on the finance committee, this is for licensing for our eighty-six servers at eleven different sites with three domain names, and that's what this is for, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman Valco. There is no old business, there are honor reports or communication, new business, Item A, approval payroll dated October 16th, 2015, in the amount of one million, four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, and a final payouts in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated October 19th, 2015, in the amount of two million, four hundred and eighty thousand, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sales for the following organization, Wednesday Good Fellowship League, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Newsom, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item D, approval of monthly treasury report for September 2015, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moizio, to place on file, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alderman's time, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio?
Couple things about housing. I've talked to some friends of mine who have some houses in Waukegan, and they brought it to my attention that in other communities, the, the city requires these people that buy up homes to, I don't know if it'd be called a bond, or something of the sort, where that they don't do any work on it within six months, the city gets to keep the money. I could get a list of the communities that do it, obviously, this wouldn't be for people that have homeownership and buy it to actually live in, but people that buy it for, you know, to rent it out, 'cause I think we know we have a lot of vacant homes in Waukegan. And this is a way to get people that buy things, to get them to move on it, instead of just sit on it and not do anything with it, and let it just sit there and sit there and sit there. I don't know that we have a problem with that, but I had some friends of mine bring that to my attention, other municipalities do that, and what it does is it forces these people that are buying up all these homes to actually do something with them and get them, you know, get them fixed up, get them rehab, and get them run it or sold, or whatever it may be, so I think that's maybe something we might wanna look into, if it's possible. Again, this is not reinventing the wheel, this is not something that we would start, other municipalities already have this going. So I will get that to Dave and to, to the mayor and to Corporation Council and the Building Department to see if we can't maybe do something with that. Along those same lines, couple, I can't remember, maybe a year ago, I had Housing, the Fair Housing Corporation of Lake County come in, and they wanna do some work in Waukegan. I know it's a little bit hard for us to come up with money and this and that, so what has happened is the Moizio family, mostly my parents, have donated a house on North Avenue and gave it to the Fair Housing Corporation of Lake County, they're gonna rehab it, they're gonna do all the work, and when they get done with it, maybe we can take a look at it. Again, it's a program, the Fair Housing Corporation of Lake County is a program that takes homes and tries to encourage home ownership, which I think we all know we need. We have a ton of rentals in Waukegan, we know that. We need to encourage home ownership, and this is just another avenue, there's many avenues that do it, but this is just another avenue, a way to get people into a home that they own. So I just wanted to bring that across, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
Yes.
Alderman May?
Yes.
Alderman Valco?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
I just wanna remind people that we're starting our schedule of leaf pickup right now in my ward, it will be Wednesday, November 4th, and Thursday, November 5th, depending on your garbage day. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our staff. You know, we don't often get a chance to say thank you, and I wanna thank each and every one of you for the work that you do, and sometimes the abuse that you take, but thank you for everything.
Alderman Cunningham?
I would like to echo. I'd like to echo. Alderman Taylor, sentiment about our staff and our various departments. I know, for me, Public Works and the Police Department, and I have just been in constant communication over the last six months, and I know, yeah, the services you try to give to all of the wards is equitable as possible, some wards need it more than others, I want you to know I appreciate you. I appreciate you very much. I call from a text to a phone call, to, to send you writing by, to send you on the streets. I sincerely appreciate what you do, and I thank you for that, and it's reflected by how the citizens respond to me about what you're doing. Give an example, I know Public Works has been just from roads to sidewalks to manholes, code enforcement officer is, he's on top of his job, our Police Department, countlessly, particularly our Patrol Division, it's just, it is unbelievable of what you do and how you do it, and I know some of the stresses that you have, we understand that, we appreciate that, and thank you for that. If I haven't said it before, I'm saying it now, thank you very much. Both chiefs, your 911 center, I call them probably four or five times, if not a day, definitely throughout the week, they're always respectful and understanding. I just wish that when others call in, that they're only trying to do their job is get the best information so they can deliver it to those who would have to deliver it to. Second, I wanna talk about this young man who was hit in Waukegan, but was from Zion, a little bit close to me, because the young man's brother is, I can't believe I'm saying this, Greg, I know you probably said it already, is dating my daughter, but he was the, the brother of the young man, and the reason I wanna make these comments is, when I went to the services for this young man, you could not believe how the City of Zion turned out for this young kid. As tragic of his death was, the testament of a young man is supposed to act and supposed to be was in that, that church. The entire city of Zion, the entire school district, now, this is what I call class. The superintendent of the schools, along with the principals, and all of the faculty, did a private ceremony where they gave this young man his diploma that night. The diploma laid at the casket as the students went by. I, I was so taken back by that, that, right, that's class to me. And that city turned out from all the businesses with his name on it, to the students and, and the parents, and the young men and young ladies who came. Our young men and young ladies get a bum rap sometime, and, and, and whether it be African-American, Latino, white, male, female, but here's a young man that set an example of what you, how you're supposed to act. And I had to say that because so often, you only hear about young men who are committing crimes, young men who are doing some crazy things in, in life, and I must admit, black, young boys, but this young man had to find out upon his death how important he was to that community. And I, I was just so taken back, and so, it was a proud moment for me to, to witness that, and this young eighteen-year-old kid. I think he could've made some different choices of how, of not been on that motorcycle, probably having some experience with it, and that's the tragedy of it. But the good part is, this was a good kid that left us too early, and I hope this is an example to some of these other young men and young ladies who are out here about the choices that you make. God forbid it's catastrophic where it is death, sometimes prison, but sometimes it's gonna affect you the rest of your life, and not only that, your family. But I had to say, the City of Zion, what they need to be presented, I mean, just great job of that city how they stand up, and I will proudly say, Waukegan has done it in the past, and that's the cities I think we want our communities to be like. I, 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 I just had to say that, and if no one else went, Greg, I'm pretty sure you heard about it. It was just unbelievable how the school district gave this young man his diploma in a private ceremony, that was, I thought that was a touch of class, in my opinion. Last but not least, I spoke with the chief earlier today, parents, I know you dropping your children off at school, I understand that you trying to get to work, but you cannot be speeding in these school zones, and God knows you cannot be running the, is that a stop sign, chief, when the bus, that's considered a stop sign, right?
Yeah.
You, you can't run the stop sign. That two minutes is not gonna make you, if you're late, you're late. But please be cautious around our, our, our school zones, please. I spoke with the chief about a situation in my area, but I think an SOS needs to go out that, hey, if you're dropping a kid off, they already late and you're late, there's nothing you can do that's gonna make up that time. Call in and, and let the chips fall where they may.
Get up earlier.
As Alderman Moizio said, get up earlier. But that's it, thank you.
Alderman Seager?
I think Sam, Sam Alderman Cunningham said what I, I wanted to say. All the employees, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, City Hall workers, everyone, I wanna personally thank you for all your hard work. I thank you from the bottom of my heart to the top, God bless you, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Taylor, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meaning adjourned.
The City of Waukegan is replacing about twenty thousand water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc. to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information, or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than thirty minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter, remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed, and that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.